You must really be busy this time of year with getting, getting ready for caucus.
Getting all the candidates to do their proper filings and notifications.
That's a herding cats kind of thing, yeah.
Just do it, get it over with.
Thank you for signing those checks. Good night. I've heard that we're probably gonna have some people doing comments, know the agenda about the accommodations tax, so we'll see. There's Jane, she just can't stay away. She misses us.
That's right.
Any answer?
Is it Nancy?
Hey Cisco. Yeah, I've got those, side both of them, and one jurors and one ball. All right, fine.
He's, he's very, he is here, he can say that.
Oh wow.
This is sort of spire. So we've got a market cap. He's actually got a house here.
That's pretty tight. Pretty hot.
Yeah, he's a great improvement. Getting out of call session.
Good too.
I'm checking to see if people on Zoom can hear us okay.
Get everybody on Zoom here, hear this okay? I get no response, so I can't.
Christiana has a thumbs up, and Carl said yes in the chat.
Oh god, okay, alright. Thank you, thank you. She's meticulous.
So one of us gets to bow out?
Yeah, maybe that's where we're going. Which one of you doesn't want to go?
That's why I'm here, make sure I do it.
No, you, you'd be the chair.
I was gonna say, it's not the obvious.
Who does, it's not here. They're gonna be on, for sure.
That's two of the five.
It's not, it would be in front of city council anyway. It's not like some separate deal. One of us just goes and has come off.
I'm used to change, I'm just spreading that.
Hey Max. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council.
You know, I was just looking at this. I keep, every week, I have a schedule, I put it on my door. And then I, I, then I keep track of all my daily things, and I staple onto that. And so for the last six years, I, I have every week and every day recorded of my tasks. And it's probably completely worthless, I hope I don't ever have to go back and find any of them, but it's just a habit.
Yeah.
That's true.
Alright, well, it is six o'clock, and at six o'clock, we will call this city council meeting of February first, 2022 to order. Rule call please.
Councilmember Laaretson, here. Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Mayor Lobby.
Here.
Councilmember Luna Leo.
Here.
Mayor Procham Green.
Here.
Councilmember Fergency.
Present.
Councilmember Tharp, here.
Right, thank you very much. At this time, I would ask for approval of the agenda, is there anything we need to change? No, there isn't none, go ahead, sorry.
Thirty seconds.
Any other discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The agenda is approved. At this time, housekeeping matters. Yeah, lots of little ones, but anybody else have anything they want to talk about for history?
Um, it's come to my attention that there apparently is a loophole in the short-term rental class one licensing, where there's two individuals who do not live in the city, but have taken their two short-term rentals, and one claims they live at one, and one claims they live at another. And I, I would like to deal with this.
I, I agree with you, and I'd like to help you deal with it, I just haven't had time to, to dig into that. And I, I, I thought you documented it pretty well in, in the emails.
Well, apparently they signed an affidavit, which is not in a code, but the affidavit says that they live at that property for two hundred and fifty-five days a year.
Yep. And.
And I don't see why we can't pull their records from lodging revs to see how many days, because both houses are rented as complete houses, they're not rooms being rented out, they're complete rentals.
Oh, I will, I'll get with Sarah tomorrow.
Okay.
I knew, I appreciate you bringing it back up, because it gets on the back burner like everything else. But I will talk to Sarah tomorrow about getting a report from lodging revs on those two residences. And if they indeed, they are being advertised as the whole house and not rooms in the house, then, then we should put a cease and desist on it, okay?
Okay.
And I could have the police department do that. We're, we haven't really revved up enforcement yet, but this, this will probably be our first, you know, shot at enforcement.
Okay.
Put Hal's on board, he, he knows what we're gonna be asking of, of his people.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Tracy, is it a loophole, or is it just deceitful reporting?
Well, apparently if they literally change your driver's license to reflect that they both live at, one lives at one, and one lives at the other in Mary Chapel, but their actual house is out off of, what's that, um, you wrote.
Would, would you get me all three of those addresses?
Yeah.
I, I know you've given us two of those in the emails, but if you can just give me all three, that will help me pin this down.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, it's obviously being done just to evade our, our ordinance on short-term rentals.
Okay.
I, I would agree. Any other housekeeping matters, anybody like to talk about?
I've updated Google Maps to represent two areas where there's free public parking. Unfortunately, one of the pins ended up over at the Sinclair across the, at the street at the gas station, I don't know how it ended up there, but I tried to update it today, so we'll see if it happens.
Thanks for doing that.
But, uh, the west third one, I put in this morning, so hopefully it's approved by tomorrow.
Great.
So we'll see, maybe that'll help.
Well, for my housekeeping matter, I have in front of me a contract for the lot behind the west of her. I have not signed it yet, I just got it this morning. Christiana has a copy also. I've made notes on questions I want to go over with her. If she agrees, if she agrees to this contract, depending on what changes she wants, I will sign it tomorrow, and we will be under contract to buy that lot. Now, just so you know.
Very exciting.
It, we, it's not a very big lot. I thought it was from the alley all the way to the wall, the elk, it's not. It only goes about twenty-five or thirty feet, and the rest of that wall is to the elks. So it's not very big, and, and so we'd have to, we, I mean, I don't know how many parking spaces we get in it, but it's a first step.
Is it a single city lot then? It's only twenty-five feet?
Uh, I, I, I don't know, I looked at the map today, that's what it looked like to me. It also shows it's three thousand and forty-nine square feet, as Tracy said, which is more than a single lot, so it may be longer. It doesn't look very wide, it may be long. If it's twenty-five feet wide, that's plenty for cars. So, uh.
So the contract has all the usual, give out a jail-free thing?
Yes, yeah. It, it has, it has escape clauses in it, and as almost all real estate clauses do, contracts do. There's a couple of things in here that we'll pay particular attention to, like, it, it, it actually exists in a common interest community, which shocked me. Who wants to talk?
Max.
Oh, hi Max, go ahead.
I don't want to interrupt you, Mayor. If you want to finish, I just have.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, first of all, thank you, both on those parking issues, thank you, Councilmember Tharp for updating the Google Maps. I did take a walk behind the Tabor Opera House, and some, something that I noticed is that there isn't really good adequate lighting back there. It seems that there's a light that's on the opposite side of where they're storing snow at the Silver City Printing Company. And then there's one right at the, on the alley and on, that's Plum, right? Right, right there in the corner of the, of the, the alley and the half alley, right there, but there, there is no lighting. It, it looks like there was one light that's now got wires hanging from it. And I'm just wondering, I mean, I'm happy to have that, that as a marked location for public parking. I do feel if we can put it in our bin, list of short bin items, hopefully, I feel that getting some better parking signs to it, and also adequate lighting, because I wouldn't want to, I, I wouldn't want to walk from there right now, there isn't really a a safe way, and I'm not talking about like crime, I'm just talking about a, a designated route to walk from that parking lot to town. I mean, so, so that's, that, but I, we're in, we have a step in the right direction, which is awesome. The second one too is, I do have a question on that lot, that we have a contract there ready to sign. And I also walked by that, and I just want to make sure, because from the map and form I look like, it appears that we would have access to park from the half alley. Is that your understanding of that lot? I mean, so we pull it.
It, it abuts, it abuts to the alley, that's correct.
Okay, okay. That, that I just want to make sure, because I couldn't tell from the maps. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. I would also say I reached out to community banks about the lots that we want to put under contract. I have not heard back from that person, and that's been, well, almost a week. So I'll take, you know, I'll, I'll do my best to get ahold of them and put that deal together. That, that would be even, even better opportunity for us, since it's four city lots. Also, I talked to Mallory with T2 today about possibly putting them under contract to put together a neighborhood parking permit plan. She's going to send us a proposal. And that, that would, you know, I talked to her about scope of work and what we're looking for, and so she'll give us some options, and then give us some, some possible costs.
That looks like you can put quite a few parts in there.
It's pretty long, isn't it? Yeah, I think so, I think it probably is, yeah, I think it, it's not very deep, but it's, it's very long, so that's, that'll work.
So would it, would it be this full open area?
No, no, no. It's only this part. It's only about twenty-five feet in, and the rest, that's the elks. So it'd be right here, if you look at the assessors' map.
That takes some good signage to help people know one from the other.
We almost, we almost would have to pave it.
Yeah.
And straighten it.
Right.
I think for it to be truly effective.
Yeah.
That's, it's a future thought, but you know, first thing first. Christiana, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor, just wanted to very quickly note that I don't think the lot is actually in a common interest community. The language in the contract is there only, that disclosure, the big bolded disclosure language, that's only if that section applies. And so we can double check, but just wanted to throw that out there, so there wasn't a.
Yeah, because it said, and I agree, that's what I thought when I first read it, but then I said, the property is located within a common interest community.
Yes.
We'll, we'll make sure we clarify that.
Yeah, we'll clarify. I don't think, I think that's just the standard language that's in the contract.
I hope you're right. Um, so I, I talked to Mallory, she's gonna send us a, you know, proposal. That was probably of the four things we talked about that we want to work on, that was probably the one that was gonna take the longest. So we'll see how that goes. Some quick notes, I had a nice conversation with Lori Simonsen last night. She and I are gonna start, you know, me briefing her on Monday, even though she, she won't start until the following Monday. She's really enthusiastic, I, I just, I love her attitude, so looking forward to that. City clerk, the ad went in last week, it'll be in this week's paper and next week's paper. I, I believe that we made the cutoff the eleventh of February, but I'm not positive about that. Donna and I talked about a couple of different dates. And then we'll go through the process, but Lori will be here by then, so she'll be able to help us through that process, and she and I talked about that last night. We also are gonna have, we think, I think this Friday, we'll be doing at least the first interview for Housing Director. We have three applicants. I haven't seen the applications, but, but what I was told is all three seem qualified. So that's great news, in terms of the Housing Director. So that process is getting ready to start. Yeah, I, I sort of heard that too, it's not true. And I was a little surprised at that, because I had talked to one person who was very enthusiastic about applying for it. And so I was surprised when I saw the no applicants, and it turned out that's not true. It's kind of what it is. Next thing I want to talk about, and this came up with the, I'm on the Senior Center Advisory Board. And a couple of years ago, maybe about three years ago, we had a city council meeting at the senior center. And we have talked loosely in years past about, we could have city council meetings anywhere that we choose. We just have to announce it in advance and plan it for it. And so maybe sometime this year would be fun to have at the senior center, and, and then think about other, other places in town that that might really resonate with the public.
Tabor Opera.
That's a great idea.
Manhattan.
I like that even better.
Sorry, just.
Christian, I wonder if Full Circle would host one?
Sure they would, I'd have to obviously ask.
Yeah.
Well, let's just give it some thought, but I, I, I think it's a nice idea to move around in the public space and have some meetings other than, you know, this, this is a fabulous building, but I think to some degree, coming to city council, people find it a bit intimidating, so.
It'd be, we'd have to make sure if it were advertised as hybrid, that the IT stuff was.
Oh Lori, she's all over it. Yeah, you're, no, you're absolutely. We would have to spot on, that would be planned to be a day ahead of, of planning, setting everything up and making sure that everything's functioning. We don't want what happened, you know, to work session.
In a different area of this same.
Yeah. Well, that, okay, sure. Last thing is, I, I, I'm, I'm looking at a couple of companies to do paving next summer. I'm trying to get some pricing on one company, and then talking, kind of the high country developer about developers, how do they get their stuff painted? And what do they do to make that happen? And so John's supposed to be giving me the numbers he used. So at least I have a clue about what's possible. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna ask for an answer right now, but I may come to city council and ask you, you know, we're gonna have five hundred thousand dollars in that budget in 2022. To what degree would we think we might bust that budget in order to get some things done? You know, it's rhetorical in nature right now, just something to think about. Okay, anybody else?
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
Did we get the marauding dogs problem addressed?
We have, we have cited those two people, we've cited them a second time. They have refused to sign the citation. We're now going to send them a certified letter, and we're gonna post on their door telling them that they have been cited into court, and that if they don't show up, a warrant will be issued for their arrest. They're, they're extremely uncooperative, and they could care less. So no, we haven't resolved, that is the short answer, but you know, some people are just gonna be so difficult. We just have to, we're gonna have to push it.
Can I mention one other thing?
Yes, please.
Um, everybody should have gotten a copy of the Laura RFQ evaluation form, please make sure that you review it and are ready for the meeting next week.
Thank you. Yeah, we have two different forms, right? Alright, at this time, we would love to hear from our Doran's Public. If anybody in the public would like to speak to city council on items not on this agenda, please raise your hand if you're on Zoom, or, or maybe just unmute yourself and talk to us, or if anybody here would like to speak, come up, introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
I do not see anyone of the people that are here and on Zoom are on the agenda.
Alright, thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on. At this time, we have the approval, we have three sets of minutes, we'll do the one at a time, approval of minutes from January the fourth.
Could I take a moment to admit the mistakes that I've already found and corrected, so that you don't have to deal with them? Obviously, all three of them say 2021. That has been corrected, and on January.
Look at that. I never, I didn't even catch that.
Thank you for saying that, but come on. And then on January fourth's minutes, Councilmember Tharp's name is misspelled under the approval of minutes, that's been corrected. Also, on January fourth minutes, under the resolution number two, I have corrected the motion that was moved to approve has been corrected to move to adopt. And that's all I have, so you can tell me the other mistakes.
Alright. Anybody else? On, we'll do January for, fourth. Twenty twenty-two and all. Any changes to January fourth? Then I would entertain a motion, please.
Councilmember. To move to approve the minutes from Tuesday, January fourth, 2021.
Forty twenty-two.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, all were in favor. Next up, January the eighteenth. I skimmed all three, just never really found any of them. You do have on the eighteenth, you have Megan XXX. Did you ever, were you just not able to understand her last name, or?
Yes, I, I listened so many times, never could come up with it, so that was my way of saying I.
That's what I figured. Any other changes to January the eighteenth? Then I would entertain a motion, please.
Councilmember Tharp moves to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, January eighteenth, 2022.
Three seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, all were in favor. Next up, January twenty-fifth, special city council meeting. Incidentally, on this, in that meeting, Commissioner Marcela wanted to talk about the opioid settlement, I'm meeting with her tomorrow at noon. And I'm, I'm hoping to have a word with Christiana before that, to make sure that I understand fully our stance. You know, so that I can have a conversation with Commissioner Marcel. Any other changes? I would entertain a motion, please.
Bill moves to approve the minutes Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, 2022, special city council meeting.
Yes, two seconds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, all were in favor. Next up, we have a presentation by Brett Astack from St. Vincent's Hospital. Brett is the CEO of St. Vincent's. Welcome.
Thank you much. I always like to take the opportunity to just kind of share some updates.
Thank you much. I always like to take the opportunity to just kind of share some updates with you and, uh, tie on the agenda this evening. Uh, as you know, since we opened the new hospital in September, there have been a lot of exciting things going on. Uh, we continue to dis refine processes and despite months and months of preparations, there were still a few things that kind of surprised us. Uh, with the building and with some of the processes we thought would work, we doubted we would. Um, it's been exciting to watch the team just kind of evolve and work through those processes. Uh, I'm grateful for the input we get from the community members when something doesn't quite work right. Uh, it helps us kind of refine and just move forward with those pieces. Uh, with COVID, uh, Omicron, uh, just like many other hospitals, uh, you see what we do in the state and the nation. Uh, we were hit very hard with that, had several staff members out. Uh, we actually had to close our COVID clinic, uh, for a week because of that. Uh, we, um, switched over to N ninety-five masks to kind of slow the spread amongst our staff. And, uh, we were able to mitigate, um, at least lessen the number of folks and we're all out at the exact same time. Uh, so just some crazy stuff. What's exciting now is we are seeing a bunch of older members of positivity. Uh, at one point, uh, almost one hundred percent of the COVID tests that we did were coming back positive. And, uh, lately, you know, we had one day where there were only four tests that came back positive and that was all the ones that we've done. So it's, it's great to see that declining within our community. Uh, we still definitely do advocate vaccinations and wearing of masks and, uh, we appreciate the support of the scene now throughout, uh, public gatherings to help support that to slow that spread. Uh, Omicron still is out. Uh, we're looking at perhaps another variant, uh, that might converge shortly. Um, especially with Omicron as contagious as it is, it's really not, uh, if, but it's more of a when proposition. You will come across that, uh, how your body will handle that is up to whether they're vaccinated, immune system, uh, different pieces like that. Uh, one piece that is exciting, uh, we were one of the hospitals that received approval for six relief workers from the state uh, because of the incredible shortages, uh, that have been happening in hospitals, like the state stepped up with an emergency management. And we received approval for two RNs, two LPNs and two CNAs. Uh, we had a couple of folks that were trying to slot in there. Uh, we had one young lady from Florida that was gonna come out, but she was, uh, nervous of the mountains. And so she, she declined her position. Her group has one RN, uh, that is helping us right now in our emergency department. We got two CNAs, uh, that will be helping us in our COVID clinic, uh, which will be very helpful moving forward. It also allows, uh, some of our staff that are picking up two or three extra shifts a week, uh, to get a little bit of rest and then be able to spend some more time at home. Uh, our, our emergency room, uh, does, we're being pretty active. Um, it's a, it's a incredible resource to have and just with the new facility and the new rooms and the equipment, uh, it's just much easier to take care of folks. And that flow continues to work very, very well. Uh, with our surgery department, with Omicron, we've been shut down electric surgeries for about three weeks. Uh, there was this concern about just the highly contagious nature of Omicron variant that, you know, even if you're there and you test negative, it could be three to five days before you actually test positive. We just did not want to increase the spread, uh, so we, we did delay several surgeries. Uh, up until this point, we'd had about thirty surgeries at the hospital for the month of February. We got twenty-seven scheduled just for the month of February alone. Uh, includes a lot of cataracts and dusted using colonoscopies and a big corpse there. Uh, there are almost six dozen people waiting, uh, for cataract surgery. And it's very exciting as, you know, folks, um, as we get to them on the list, you know, they're very, very loyal to our community in the hospital. And just very, very appreciative of that loyalty and them waiting until we can kind of work through the list and get everybody taken care of. Um, we have had several other surgeons reach out to us, um, including specialties with the dietary, uh, GYN surgery that would be able to help with, uh, fluorot, fertilized uterus, uh, surgeries, hysterectomies, tubal, um, tools, uh, of sterilization and implant pieces. Uh, we also have a spine surgeon that is still interested in coming up. And it, it's just very, very interesting. In every other critical access hospital I'm in, we've had to really reach out and try and find folks to come. And here, I think really because of our location and our beautiful facility, we have a lot of folks that are just begging to come up and work with us. And we just don't have the capacity to bring everybody in all at once. So it's exciting to have that, uh, challenge, which is on the different end of the spectrum than you want for critical access hospital. And overall, you know, we're looking at this year as just a year of maturation, uh, for our staff, for our teams, for our processes. Um, we are trying to limit the number of new services that we bring on, but there are oftentimes several things that just kind of fall into our lap. It just makes sense as a fit, uh, for us and for our community. Uh, one of those pieces is, uh, we're gonna be opening up a genetics lab, uh, in the next month or so here. And what's unique about this, instead of, uh, the big national genetic testing, you see, uh, a twenty-three linear ancestry, your genetic results actually go into a test database. You sign away your, uh, uh, ownership of your test results, basically. It goes in for research. There's a lot of great things that come out of that. Uh, with the genetic testing, we're able to offer your results actually to private, uh, which is, is something that is very important to many folks. And our main, uh, our main focus for page one of our genetic testing will be, uh, working on behavioral health. And so often, uh, behavioral health medications can take several months before you know if they take effect or if they will actually help your quality of life. And oftentimes, you might go through two or three different medications, uh, before you find one that works for you. By that point, you might be a year plus into the process, which means a lot of time spent on medications, um, a lot of time and quality of life that isn't quite back up to where it is as you work with your provider. Uh, with the genetic testing, we will be able to provide, we will be able to help patients and their providers really target in and find the right thing that will help them, uh, quickly as opposed to having to wait a long amount of time. So if you think about the quality of life and you're having a mental health issue, um, just being able to get to feel back to, you know, normal or what you feel might be more and more normal or to be able to function at a whole work, uh, job, which be able to care for your family, it's just a, it's a great thing that will be able to help you. Uh, we're also making plans to look at things on, uh, helping to, um, maximize or to, to create greater efficiencies for diabetic medications, uh, which can have similar, uh, testing, you know, where one might work for you better than another. Uh, also looking at these cancer pieces, uh, within cannabis metabolism, which is kind of an interesting topic here in our state. Um, and it's, it's just an exciting venture, um, for what we'll be able to do. Uh, there'll be a telehealth visit to establish everything assessed that you can on the front end. Uh, there'll be the genetic testing component. We'll be able to do it here on site. And then we have a genetic counselor that will actually work with the patient and the provider to help understand the results and how to best use those. So it's a, it's a very, very unique program in the state of Colorado. Uh, we've got about a hundred providers so far over the front range that are looking to utilize those services. So it's not something that will just be able to vet in our county. Uh, we're looking at being able to provide a, a bigger impact for the entire state. Uh, Colorado as well. So it'd be another great feather in, uh, Ledville's cap up here. And, Bart, any questions, uh, from the, the council, uh, that would be remarkable?
Wow. I mean, you know, they, they, they say build it and they will come. That seems to be holding true here.
It's, it's pretty exciting. You know, one of the other components of the genetic testing is this kind of I O T two lead training program, uh, that we would like to launch. Uh, we actually have two providers that have approached us once they've heard, kind of through the break buying of the genetic testing, that they would like to come and be involved. And so that, that program might even develop a little more quickly. And when you think of the race series and, uh, just the lifestyle that we lead here at ten thousand two hundred feet, uh, being able to have the opportunity to be real, really dial in the training, uh, maybe dial in the supplements, your nutrition, uh, the way you lift, the way you work out, you know, it would be very, very exciting and beneficial to folks as well.
Any questions or thoughts from city council? Yes, Chris.
Hi Brett. Um, I'm just wondering if now that people are getting their at-home COVID tests delivered by the government, if we're seeing a decrease to believe because people are taking it at home and it's not being reported.
So it definitely has the opportunity to provide some false security because, um, when all of the testing we do through the hospital, with your public health, all of those results get reported back to the state. And that's what creates all the data and graphs. With the home testing, there's the opportunity to do that. But we all know most folks, um, most likely will, will not follow through with the reporting as diligently as we have to a hospital. Uh, so, you know, as, as you look at what that could cause, you know, if you are positive, definitely, you know, maybe get them into the clinic or we can see them that would be result in a more definite test that would be reportable. But it definitely has the opportunity to provide a, a false sense of security. Or it, it might also, you know, just create some skewed, uh, statistics as far as where we really sit. But the more important thing is we hope that folks, as they do take this test, actually take it upon themselves to follow the guidelines that are out there to, you know, stay at home, to try not to spread, or if they do get symptomatic, to come in and see us so we can help them. Uh, we actually still have, you know, anywhere from maybe one to two folks that are hospitalized, uh, with COVID, um, including, you know, a couple pediatric patients. Uh, they're just needing a little bit of extra help, uh, with some oxygen support over the night to, to be back home. And so, you know, I, I, I just hope that folks, as they're testing, you know, continue to be responsible and see.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have one quick question. Do you know what the rates are, um, for vaccination rates in the county as well as in the city? When you just?
Um, off the top of my head, I, I haven't seen new, uh, data pieces within two or three weeks, so I can't really speak to that effectively right now.
Cool.
Uh, it's something if we were to get in touch with Colleen over a couple of calls, she is the gatekeeper of all the great data for us and she'd be one that could help us out. Now, definitely our, our vaccination rates here in the county are much higher than other communities. And as I'm on calls and working with other hospital CEOs, um, especially over on the western slope, um, it, it is great to, to be able to talk about and understanding of our community and embracing that we're trying to protect each other and move forward with the vaccination pieces. Uh, on the front range, you know, they, they still have very low adoption of the vaccinations and that's why you see much higher case rates, uh, over in that part of the state.
I would say the last numbers I saw, they're, they're older numbers. Maybe a month ago was, uh, just about seventy percent.
Right.
Uh,
It's hovering around there.
That, that had, uh, both vaccinations and about eighty percent that had one vaccination.
And that's, is that for county or city?
That was county. They don't, I've never seen any data on just city.
Okay, good. That's what I figured. I'm sure.
Yeah, the other thing that tags along with that is the FDA is, uh, just recently, in the last couple of days, um, officially approved use of the Darn vaccine. You know, we have a new name of, like, Stryker X.
Yeah.
Really?
No way.
Yeah. And so, you know, oftentimes, you know, a lot of the argument is it's vaccination law. It's just emergency authorization. And so now with the official endorsement of the FDA, uh, with the Darn vaccine as well, they're having to be able to assist some folks and get that.
Right. I, I do have one more question. You may or may not actually know the answer to this, but, you know, one of the, one of the concerns with, with building a new hospital was that a lot of people would, you know, relative to the old hospital, were declining care here locally and were going over the hill. And I mean, there was a lot of people. Are you seeing that starting to reverse itself?
Yes, we are, you know, so especially if you look at a number of specialty visits, you know, when I came on board, we had practically one hundred percent out migration from our county to the folks in specialty there. And as we've been able to bring that back in, and we, we're definitely, you know, the only place we ever go is top on that number. Uh, as we've combined, uh, forces with the Ledville Medical Clinic and rocking up down the practice and creating a better family health center, uh, we're seeing close to eleven hundred people a month, um, in the clinic, uh, which is, you know, increased numbers, uh, from, uh, the two clinics previously.
True.
Um, and the emergency department, especially as we first opened and just before, uh, we did open in August, September, October area, uh, each month was successive record number of visits that we, um, had in the emergency department. And then tagging in with that as well, the number of EMS calls that we have with the ambulance service also hit record months, uh, for three or four months through twenty twenty-one. So as we, as we look at folks, you know, coming back home for care, uh, it definitely, I believe, is increasing. Um, as we continue to expand and offer new services and, uh, increase our provider base, such as the addition of Dr. Stewart and Dr. Solen, who joined the Family Health Center, uh, last fall. It, it just create, creates a, a greater opportunity for choice and for folks to be able to stay a little bit closer for care.
Great. Thank you very much.
On that note, I also had a question. Um, how about for, uh, specifically Latino and Hispanic community, um, have you seen those numbers as well stay up with, um, you know, coming to here instead of going over to, uh, usually Frisco?
Um, we don't break out our, our population to really know, you know, um, if, if, if we are increasing. I have a sense again that we are. Um, we are increasingly hiring a lot more bilingual folks. Um, you know, half of our orientation class yesterday was bilingual. There were two ladies. But one, one was bilingual and, uh, we are trying to increase, uh, that availability within the system. And, you know, as you and I have talked, you know, just trying to get folks used to the idea that if I, if I don't have someone that can speak the language, um, then we do have the other system, you know, on our badges, like my badge says, followed with a G's, you know, which means I, I speak Portuguese, you know, um, we are trying to identify all staff members as well, so there's a visual cue, uh, for folks as they come in with, um, other language capabilities still, you know.
All right, yeah.
So, and then if I could just tag you back in.
Yeah, speaking into the microphone now, because so we'll get to everybody else.
Sorry, just tagging into your question before, um, I have a second general surgeon that's actually, uh, rejoining us, Dr. Zach Hartman, who had been gone from the hospital for a couple of months. Uh, he's actually starting to do procedures on Saturday. And so we have ten individuals in the month of February, that if you, if you think about the preparation for a colonoscopy, you know, where you have the, the large amount of liquids and, and everything that kind of happens with that prep. You can do that on a Friday night, have your procedure on a Saturday. You don't have to take off work. You don't have to find someone to take off work to drive you, you have Saturday or Sunday to kind of get everything back and going. And it'll just be much more convenient. So we're, we're really looking at ways to make it easier to come here than it would be to go anywhere else. And that will just help also to increase the number of folks that are able to stay home for care.
That's fantastic. Thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, Brett, thanks for your report tonight and, and all the good work. Um, well, last time you were here, I think housing was a big barrier to hiring for some key positions as well as, as other, like, as all your positions potentially. Is that still the case or what's the, what's the status there?
Uh, housing is still a huge concern. Uh, we're continuing to, uh, look at adding on residences on our three residential lots with Phase Six Street.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we, we want to just have everything totally set and be financially stable before we venture into any more building projects. Uh, part of what we are doing to help alleviate some of our housing concerns is, uh, today I actually just signed a lease for a home here in town, uh, that we'll be using for workforce housing. Uh, we have an interim CFO, uh, that just joined us today from Arizona and he'll be helping us until, uh, refill our CFO position. He will be one of our, uh, folks that are staying in our new workforce housing house,
Hmm.
um, as well as, uh, two of the techs that will be working in the genetics lab. You know, and so if, if, if we look at, you know, what it would have cost us before, you know, if we were renting out, you know, another home, we're doing hotel stays. Uh, it's much less expensive for us to rent this house. And, uh, we're also looking at potentially a second home we use as workforce housing as a stopgap until we can have our own housing built on campus.
All right, thank you.
And take care, sir. I forgot about take care.
It's always on the sheet.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Brett, thank you so much. Appreciate the update. Good, nice, nice work. This is, this is great news.
It, it's exciting to see, you know, that this flower really blossomed up here and with this new facility. Uh, we're getting a lot of attention and, um, I'm headed, uh, back to Chicago for my third time, uh, to actually speak at national conferences about what we are doing here in Ledville. And so it's very, very exciting to be recognized, uh, for the work that's going on there. So thank you much for your time, man.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the mayor's appointment, uh, of city council members to board of adjustment. Now, uh, a decision has been made that, that we're not gonna ask for volunteers. I'm just gonna pick people. Maybe not. Uh, Christian, just give us a, a quick overview of why we're doing this.
Uh, sure. So in your code, there is a provision for, um, the appointment to members of the Board of Adjustment. And the Board of Adjustment is basically just the, you know, putting on your judge hats and deciding variance applications or appeals for zoning decisions of the city, if and when that comes up. Um, and so under your code, it's a five-member, uh, board. And, um, mayor, just for your information, in case you don't want anybody to feel left out, you can, um, appoint uh, everybody, just, you know, one or two people as all. you can, um, appoint, uh, everybody, just, you know, one or two people as alternates.
Oh, we, we lost you, Christiana.
Oh. Where did you lose me? Can you hear me?
Uh, we can now. We lost you about two sentences ago.
We didn't want anybody to feel left out.
Okay, so, um, you, the board of adjustment is five members, and mayor, if you, uh, would like to and don't want anybody to feel left out, uh, you can appoint the other two people, uh, from the city council as alternates to the board of adjustment.
So, Christiana, my, I guess, my question, because in the past, we've always just heard variances as the entire council and the mayor. Has this little bit always been in our code and we've just been rolling along doing all seven of us?
Yep.
Great detective work.
Okay. So I, I'd like to, you know, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on this. It's, it's pretty perfunctory, but, uh, I, I'd like to know who would be the two alternates. How's that?
Could I ask a couple of questions first?
Please do.
Do these, are these just issues that would come before council anyway?
Yes.
So it's not like extra meetings or an extra committee or something?
Somebody just comes in and says, oh, you know, like the setback is supposed to be X many feet, but I'd like it this many feet.
Well, that, that would, that would actually be a variance.
It's a variance, but that's, but that's what this says, is it takes care of things like variance.
Oh, okay. I did realize that.
Christian is nodding.
So that's, that's, that's why it seemed very strange, because we've always just heard it as an entire council.
Well, I'll take one for the team. I volunteer to be an alternate.
So here's my question. Here's my question, though. So if this happens, like, during council meetings, is it just the five that end up voting? Can the alternates participate in the discussion? Do they, or do they just have to kind of sit there unless somebody asks?
Alternates could participate in the discussion, but they won't vote. Yes, go ahead, Christiana.
No, mayor, you got it. You're, that, that's right. The alternates could participate in the discussion, uh, but the five members of the board would vote. The alternates would vote if somebody is filling in for a regular member of the board. And you would just convene as the board of adjustment to hear that, kind of like you do for other things, like the liquor authority and things like that.
Okay. Uh, do we need a second alternate?
I'd like to nominate Tracy Loretson as a member of the, uh, the board.
Oh, so you'll be a member of the board. Christian?
I can be a member of the board.
Thank you. Dana?
Well, I think since you're the mayor and I'm the mayor for town, we should be the alternates.
I'd love that.
Sister.
I'll be on the board.
Jill?
I will participate on the board.
Max?
I'll participate on the board.
Oh, we have, we have. Okay. At which case, in which case, at this time, I'd agree lobby near blah blah. Here, here, oh, yeah, wait, wait, wait for it. Here, boy, appoint, uh, Max Fregency, Tracey Loretson, Christian, uh, Luna Leal, Cisco Tharp, and Tim Hill, uh, to be, uh, the, uh, appointed board of adjustments, with the alternates being Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Green and Mayor Lobby. Okay, and I'll finish through this. And they will serve in the city's board of adjustments. Um, each member of the board of adjustment shall serve in that capacity for the duration of that member's term on city council. Okay, we're all done.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, uh, the first up is a Nordic knockout. Carl, take it away.
Uh, I don't have much to say, um, other than, uh, we, th- this is really dependent on whether you all approve ski drawing.
It's just that position on the screen.
It is, right?
Can you not hear me? Okay, give me, uh, could you, could you hear me to start?
Yes, Carl, I can hear you. This is council member Fregency. I can hear you. I don't know if the, the rest of the council can hear you. Can you hear us down there?
We're having a bit of a speaker problem, right?
But it sounds like we have Carl now. Carl, go ahead and speak up.
Okay, um, so, uh, my ask is really dependent on whether you approve ski drawing in a few minutes. Um, but if you approve ski drawing, then, uh, we are, are, uh, we always try to just get our kids out, um, to ski down Harrison Avenue on Friday night. We ask for nothing other than what you already do, which is to put snow down the avenue. Um, we, you know, just are, uh, uh, some high school and middle school kids who get out and have some fun, um, and ski because the snow's there.
How many years have you done this, Carl?
Oh, probably around ten.
Okay. Um, all right. Go ahead, Max.
Um, I have a question for.
We have a connectivity issue here.
I, I am on, I am not on mute on my screen. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you fine now.
Okay.
It's, it's all depending on how Lori holds her mouth at this point.
Got it. Uh, I am curious, uh, to the proponent, Carl Ramsey. Carl, you said the high school students, but is it open to all public? Can I participate for a five-dollar fee or whatever the fee is this year?
Uh, you are welcome to participate. Our fee is the same it's been for the last few years, which is zero dollars.
Zero dollars? Oh, that's fantastic. I always like being butt kicked by high school students. I'll be there.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Middle schoolers might get you too, Max.
I was gonna say, Max, you better.
Better watch it.
Bet on what round you'll be knocked out in.
All right. I would entertain a motion, please.
Who must approve temporary use permit for Cloud City Mountain Sports to host the annual Harrison Nordic Knockout Sprints on Friday, March fourth, twenty twenty-two, from seven PM until eight PM. Said approval being good for three years or through twenty twenty-four.
Green seconds.
Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Councilmember Tharp?
Yes.
Councilmember Fregency?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Green, yes. Councilmember Luna Leal?
Yes.
Mayor Lobby?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Loretson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining, Carl. We're looking forward to seeing it. Next up, we have the Mineral Belt Mayhem. Uh, not seeing Sterling. Uh, the course is the same it's been every year. Um, they do it that evening, Saturday evening, and, um, uh, I would do it, but, uh, they're up hills, so. Max will do it, though.
Also, they did just, um, put in their county permit today.
Okay.
And it looks exactly like this, but they do go outside the city.
I took text of them to.
It's pretty straightforward, isn't it? Yeah.
Have, uh, would, would Commissioner Edwards look at all these before they come to council?
Absolutely. They, yes, all the referral agencies have seen this with at least a week or two in advance.
Okay.
Um, as you can see, I write on the, count for the cover sheet. Lake County Recreation and Building Land Use got back to me, didn't have an issue, and the Fire Department gave a specific thing for each event.
Okay.
And they don't ask for the services. They, you know, as you know, they start in front of the bicycle shop and, uh, they head out for enormous suffering for a couple hours. Can they come back?
And Commissioner Edwards has talked to me about this, and he does know that they will need an escort from and from cycles of life to the Mineral Belt Trail.
Okay, yeah, that was, that was my question. What is a neutral police escort?
I asked Commissioner Edwards that, and he said it's just, it's just an escort. I, oh, yeah, okay.
Put the car in neutral and just roll.
I don't know what that means.
Drive behind the cyclists.
Maybe Sterling can answer that.
If it's, if there's neutral support, it means that they're just giving aid to, you know, like whoever. They're not focusing on, over another.
Then the pace car comes out.
And there's, he's, Sterling's coming on right now.
Hey Sterling, can you hear us? There he is. Hey Sterling. I'm muted.
Hello. So, sorry I'm late.
Okay, too late, we're done. I'm sorry. No, nevermind. Go ahead.
Um, well, I, we are, the Cloud City Wheelers have hosted the Mineral Belt Trail or Mineral Belt Mayhem for, I think, over ten years now, and we are looking for another three-year permit to coincide with the Crystal Carnival, uh, weekend happenings. We use the, the closed-down Harrison Avenue and, um, invite people from all over the state and s- some surrounding states in the past to come up to Leadville and ride around the Mineral Belt Trail at night and start and end on Harrison Avenue and, uh, aid in the, the celebrations of the Crystal Carnival Weekend. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody that may have.
Anybody have any questions for Sterling? Sterling, I think the only question that's come up so far is about the escort. Your, uh, pal is, uh, the Commissioner Edwards is on board with, with all of that. Is that correct?
Yes, the, uh, the escort, you know, every once in a while, um, timing doesn't work out with the escort due to, you know, officers being busy. Um, and we have been able to work with that. Um, putting, putting blinkers on and escorting them with one of our volunteers driving up to the animal shelter with their blinkers on and, uh, moving over, um, if we are unable to get a police escort.
Sterling, I think the question came up, are there any up hills?
Uh, well, people know, if they ride with me, they know it's all downhill, so, or at least that's what I tell them.
We're, we're asking for Max.
It's all uphill, yes.
It is the easier direction, but, you know, it's just, it's uphill forever, that's all. So it is. Okay. Thank you, Sterling. Uh, any other questions for, uh, Mr. Budge? Uh, then I would entertain a motion, please.
Uh, councilmember Luna Lev motion to approve the temporary use permit for Cloud City Wheelers to host the annual Mineral, Mineral Belt Mayhem on Saturday, March fifth, twenty twenty-two, from six fifteen PM until eight fifteen PM. Said approval being good for three years, uh, or through twenty twenty-four.
Loretson, second.
Is there any other discussion? I, I love that you put this on. It's a, it's a great event. Thank you. Rule call, please.
Councilmember Loretson?
Yep.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Lobby?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leal?
Yes.
More, Mayor Pro Tim Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Fregency?
Yes.
Councilmember Tharp?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sterling.
Thank you, everyone. I can arrange fat bikes for all if you want to participate.
Uh, what, what size motors?
Run what you brung. You, you got legs.
Oh, you don't want to know. Okay. Uh, next up, we have Jane's Hot Dog Stand. Jane's on with us. Hi, Jane.
Hi, everybody. Um, thanks for having me, and thanks to Lori for putting the, uh, application in for a three-year application. Um, I just want to sell hot dogs June, July, August, again this summer. I started in two thousand, so this would be my twenty-third summer. And I'm there at five oh five Harrison, in front of the courthouse, uh, eleven-ish to three-ish daily, selling hot dogs, soft drinks, chips, and brawners.
Thank you, and you are a major gathering place for the community, too, it appears.
Well, I'm not a sociologist, but I play one downtown.
Any questions for Jane? You want to know what's in the hot dogs? Anybody want to know what's in the hot dogs?
Just goodness and love.
All right, I would entertain a motion, please.
Green moves to approve a temporary use permit for Jane's Hot Dog Stand, starting Monday, May thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, from eleven AM until three PM and ending Monday, September fifth, twenty twenty-two. Said approval being good for three years or through twenty twenty-four.
Fregency seconds. Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Councilmember Tharp?
Yes.
Councilmember Fregency?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leal?
Yes.
Mayor Lobby?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Loretson?
Yeah.
Thanks, Jane.
Thank you all very much.
Uh, next up, ski drawing. Deputy counsel.
Deputy deputy counsel. Deputy counsel, six one with seventh street. Longtime listener, longtime contributor, let me show. Uh, you guys think, should we do it again?
Yes.
Should we bring it back to Harrison Avenue where it always belonged? Yeah? All right, we do too. Uh, so keep things short and sweet. Certainly, if there's any questions, I answer them as soon as I can. Uh, we are aiming to do status quo to the twenty twenty event, literally exactly the same. Of course, may have some modifications to it, of course, to keep it interesting, but y'all will know the drill. We start throwing snow on four AM on Friday. I think our goal is to have it removed by, our deadline is six PM on Sunday. We're usually done with that beforehand, even when we get thirty-six inches of snow over the course of the weekend. Uh, big fans of the Nordic Knockout Sprints, big fans of the Mineral Belt Mayhem, bigger fans of how this entire community comes together, city and county, to put this on and showcase the greatest ski drawing event in the nation. Uh, left you guys a couple of stickers I've got, I try to bring every year, have yourselves. I think with that, are there any questions? On what we'd like to do this year, seeking our three-year permit back again. I hope last year was a good example of how adaptable we can be, depending on the environment that we're presented. Uh, so it's certainly a four-year, a three-year permit back. Happy to continue to come every year for quick debriefs, if that's what you guys would like.
Yeah, probably, you know, that would be nice. It'd be nice to hear from you, but also, you know, we don't know what the ensuing years will bring. We hope that it'll be downtown every year for the next seventy-five years. Uh, but we don't know for sure, and if it changes, then you'll, you'll come talk to us about it. Uh, I'd like to ask, you know, are you, uh, you came to us, uh, to help fund the video, the video, uh, of this? How, tell us, how's that going to work?
Yeah, uh, good news to report, the Wrangler Network, the Wrangler Networks subscribers in the room are, are, yes. The Wrangler Network is asked to air, uh, live and get, I don't know, maybe tens of thousands of cowboy and cowboy viewers. That'd be awesome to get some exposure for the, for Leadville. Uh, we'll do it in a similar fashion. You know, there's, there's definitely going to be some first-year learning lessons we'll do in on the avenue. Uh, talking with the county about, can we get a boom truck? I'd love to get an elevated perspective if that works. Uh, have had a rooftop or two, or a, you know, second floor, hey, I live here. Would you maybe want to throw a camera out my window? Like, yeah, sure, let's see what works. Maybe we do some different angles for Sunday. Big objective, and thank you again for the financial support so that we can continue to do this. I think it's a great level of exposure for our community. Uh, we'll see. This is kind of going to be dress rehearsal. My mentality is this is dress rehearsal for next year's seventy-fifth. You know, and there's going to talk of Jumbotron. What I have at these other events is I go and ruin my body at my eighteen.
Roll my paper, paper.
It won't last long. But I, I don't know, I, I continue to dress scampi, I mean, it's like, okay, maybe on the, you know, south side of the main sidewalk or the courthouse lawn, could be a. But I, I don't know, I, I continue to dress scout the avenue. It's like, okay, maybe on the, you know, south side of the main sidewalk or the courthouse lawn could be a spot. How in the heck do you get some trailer with a Jumbotron on it there? Because it's, it's awesome to see the instant replay, especially all the crashes and another sponsorship opportunity for, you know, this year on the broadcast, we'll have CMC, I think, is who we select them to sponsor the instant replay. So it's kind of becoming a bit about that. You know, I'll be the first to admit there, there may be some in the future. They get things like the Mining Museum, Outward Bound, High Mountain Institute, some of those iconic, uh, organizations that identify our community that I maybe don't seek sponsorships from, but that helped with the, the commercial aspect and shaping, hey, what a cool event. Hey, what a cool community that event has put on. That's kind of my goal has been broadcast, and we're going to ride that wave for as long as financially and feasibly we can do it.
Fantastic. Uh, any questions for Duffy?
My biggest fear always, Duffy, is someone losing an edge
Yeah.
on one of those outside turns, right on the jump, and just like launching onto the sidewalk or through a storefront.
Yeah.
Has that happened ever?
Well, uh, Kevin Mastin claims the fame of being a sidewalk surfer.
Oh, poor Kevin.
Eighties and nineties.
Wow.
Uh, I seen Jason Dahl on that stoplight jungle called, but took off fine, but his landing ski popped off.
Ah.
And he landed right in a puddle.
Yeah.
Right kind of in front of the, the former cook mine.
Yeah.
But no, I've never.
Yeah.
I've never seen anybody, and I hope, that's not my biggest fear.
Yeah.
I have lots of similar ones. I hope we never see anybody. That's why we get exactly why we get insurance for the event.
Yeah.
Name the city, global banking trust, move based committee to the announcer stand. That's why we get insurance.
Yeah.
If a skier, equipment, a horse, a rider were to go off into the crowd, personal injury or property damage probably covered.
Yeah.
That answers, yes.
Yeah. Do you think it would be good to mark some spots people shouldn't stand, like where, you know, I wouldn't want to reduce viewing capacity?
Stop them from standing there.
I'm not attached to it. I'm just, I'm just putting it out there.
Totally, and, and I may encourage, don't overthink it.
Yeah.
Because if you try to make ski joring too safe, what the heck is the fun of that?
It'd be like, yeah, hell.
Yeah.
Which is, which is the part about being one of the guys on the sidewalk, just the same as this, about being one of those guys on the snow. We have, we have last week first.
I wanted to tell everybody, I attended the police department staff meeting, uh, uh, last week, and, uh, part of the discussion was ski joring, and it's an all-hands-on-deck. And now we have, you know, although we still have two, uh, post-certified officers, we now have about five CSOs. Uh, two of them are in the academy, but they're going to be here this weekend, that, that particular weekend. Uh, so there'll be a really strong police presence for that event. Not that, not that it needs a lot of police presence, uh, but keeping the crowds from encroaching on the course sometimes. Keeping, uh, people always try and bring dogs to this event, even though it's a no-dog event because of the horses. Uh, we have to keep that under control. So, anyway, I just want to let everybody know that the police department's on, so I'm, I'm pleased for that.
Yeah, we've always been a little pleased, too, that, uh, both city and county police forces manage to the level that they need to. Uh, I think that that's critically important, you know, leaving everybody with a good experience here. Parking, if parking gets messed up, because we get thirty-six inches of snow, putting parking tickets on people's vehicles as they're exiting party gift is definitely not going to resolve the problem, nor is that going to be the lasting image that we want, but perhaps, and I would encourage your former chiefs to know, hey, next time you come, or please be mindful, thanks for coming to our community. You know, that's, I think, a softer message that accomplishes the same goal. It doesn't make the car disappear. You know, and with that, I, my crystal ball has never worked very well. When it comes to ski joring, we probably would have won, we would have won more often. But I, I'd say, if I had to make a guess, get ready. I think this one's going to be big. I think this is just the thing that our surrounding counties and folks in Denver are getting on Facebook traffic already, folks that have no idea who they are, saying, how you doing? Doing it. I say, yep, it'll be the epic return, so let's spread the word. All hands on deck. I like that, I like that, Mayor. All hands on deck, everyone, on March fifth and sixth for the seventy-fourth.
Fantastic. Any other questions for Duffy? Yes, please, Travis.
Um, my husband has said that if a horse gets loose and I catch it, I get to keep it.
I think you have to fight the cowboy. So I think that one comes for that. I don't own any stock.
So I just got to disappear really quick.
I guess, yeah. It's like Wild West, your honor, it's here. She went that way. I don't think she's coming back.
Max, anything? All right, great. All right, I would, I would entertain a motion, please.
Loretson moves to approve the temporary use permit for Leadville's ski joring Saturday, March fifth, twenty twenty-two, and Sunday, March sixth, twenty twenty-two, from eight AM until four PM. Should that be six PM?
No, what, what, four will be done.
Okay.
Six is when on Sunday, the deadline to have twenty-four state highway back open is.
All right. Said approval being good for three years or through twenty twenty-four. Green seconds.
Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Councilmember Tharp.
Yes.
Councilmember Fergency.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leo.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil.
Yes.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, we have, we have plenty of snow. Thank you all again.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, definitely.
Okay. We have, uh, two ordinances and two resolutions. We'll start first with ordinance number two. Hey, you guys, cool it. All right, ordinance number two, series of twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending the Leadville Municipal Code to add a new chapter, two point five six, and amending various sections to establish the position of city administrator. And this is first reading, so it will not be a public hearing, although if anybody in the public wants to comment on this, we'd be hap- happy to hear from them. And this will officially put the city administrator in. Thanks, Nancy.
Looks like she's taking a lot of things off your plate.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, that's, that's the intent, although it's not that I want to stuff off my plate, but I want us to be, I want us to be run by professionals.
Yeah, list of things that you keep every day of.
I do have to tell you, I had a co- I had a conversation today with Donna and, and Lori, and, uh, we, we kind of a realization that there's so much going on, we can't get it all done. And, and, and I said, as, as human beings, you just have to come to that realization that, okay, you prioritize, you keep your head down every day, you work hard, and, but it's not all going to get done. So with a new city administrator and a new city clerk, uh, then we're going to be back up to full speed. And so I think in the next month, we may, you know, start, start to come around. I, I think we're all, we're doing a great job, but there's just so much, so. Okay, I would entertain a motion, please.
Councilmember Tharp moves to adopt ordinance number two, series of twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending Leadville Municipal Code to add a new chapter, two point five six, and amending various sections to establish the position of city administrator on first reading. I further move to schedule a second meeting of this ordinance for city council's regular meeting on March first, twenty twenty-two.
Bill second. Any other discussion?
Mayor, this is Councilmember Fergency. Can you hear me?
Uh, Max, yes, please.
Yep, yep. I just want to, I just want to, uh, make sure that I understand the rules governing, going through first reading of an ordinance. Do we actually have to open it to public comment? Or we can just go right in? Okay, just.
You don't, but, but we will accept public comment if somebody wants to speak. That's the way we, we've kind of run first readings in the past.
Okay.
If somebody has an opinion they want, you know, discussed, we're happy to hear it.
Thank you. That's why I need the refresher on March one.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Rule call, please.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leo.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Fergency.
Yes.
Councilmember Tharp.
Yes.
Uh, next up, we have resolution number seven, series of twenty twenty-two, a resolution appointing Lori Simonton as city administrator for the city of Leadville and approving unemployment agreement. This is multifaceted. We have the resolution itself. We have the employment agreement attached to it, and then we also have exhibit A, uh, which is the, the list of duties. Now, exhibit A is by reference, um, you know, so if her list of duty changes over time, um, it makes it much easier to do, and it's not, not a notice.
What's the timing with this, the grant to help with salary with doubt?
Actually, that's a really good question, and I'm not sure. I'd have to ask Dola. Dola's granted us the money, and I don't know if we have billed Dola yet for that money. I don't think it's, I don't think it's in arrears. I think we get it in advance. Uh, so I think, I think that is simply a matter of, of billing Dola. The first year is ninety thousand dollars, and, uh, and that's what they'll do. Uh, I could ask Christie Doon that question, because she's, she's the one.
Wasn't it originally, we were uncertain when to actually hire the person, because the Dola grant would go into effect?
That was because the, the contract had to be signed between Dola and the city before we could actually make that hiring. But that grant, that, that grant, uh, I mean, it happened within like ten days. It happened so quick. They were saying it could be months, and Christie was on it, and she got to us. So mid-December, we have the contract in hand. What, what did that grant cover again? What percentage for the first year? Seventy-five percent in the first year, fifty percent in the second year, twenty-five percent in the third year. And zero percent in the fourth year. So hopefully by then she's paying for herself. Oh, I think that's going to happen when I look.
Councilmember Fergency, did you wish to speak?
I'm on site right now. Thank you.
Christian, and I spent some time with this. So any comments on this, Christian, before we go to motion?
I'm not really, Mayor. I think that, um, just to note that the employment agreement and the provisions in the municipal code are supposed to kind of work hand-in-hand. A- and the employment agreement, as you can see in the, um, ordinance, that's, that's part of the ordinance, too. And that's a standard practice for city administrators, city and town managers, and things like that, to have an employment agreement like this.
Mayor?
Yes, sir, Max.
I, I did have a question in, uh, section four, C, salary performance compensation reviews for benefit. I'm just curious what folks thought of, um, the relocation reimbursement of two thousand dollars. Is that, is that a small, normal, large amount?
Well, I wasn't sure where to go with that. I'll tell you, when, uh, when we hired, uh, Chief Glenn, some years ago, we gave him a four thousand dollar allowance, but he was moving from Pennsylvania. Uh, and so I thought this was a fair accommodation for someone moving from Denver. And she's agreed to all these terms, so.
Okay.
I did a little research on potential relocation compensation packages, and, uh, two thousand seems very reasonable and small. And, and of course, that's in like more, uh, large business corporation world, but many of those are up between twenty thousand and sixty thousand, you know, so strikes me as a reasonable amount.
I, you know, when, when I presented this to her, you know, she had the opportunity to come back and, and, and discuss any and all of these, and she said, no, I'm fine with this. So, um, I was understandably pleased that, that we seemed to have hit, hit a sweet spot right off the bat.
That makes me just wonder, like, what goes on in the rest of the country?
Yeah, well, I was researching it for Bright Start, you know, the daycare, and I was like, oh, okay, yeah, it's, it's not really our ballpark.
Bright Start can't afford it? What?
Maybe not with the ARPA. No, just kidding.
Yeah, just. Would like to comment on section four. Yes, please. One. If we can just make sure that this initial goal-setting institute planning meeting stays on the radar. Supposed to do that within thirty days. That's pretty aggressive, and I thought it was pretty aggressive, but I, I think it's something that, uh, that we as a city council need to be able to, uh, spend some time with her, probably in a work session, and really discuss what is it we would like to see? Maybe, maybe in the next five years, uh, what are, what are our goals as a city? And, and, you know, let her know, uh, both individually and as a council.
We haven't had a visioning session.
I've still got a visioning for the last time.
Yeah, I know.
But, uh, good, very good point, Tim. I don't know if it says it in here, uh, what, uh, in her letter, in the, uh, offer letter, uh, she starts at ninety-five, and I said that she would have a, a six-month review, uh, and if it was satisfactory, she would go to a hundred. She originally pushed back and thought, you know, maybe a hundred was more appropriate, and I said, I really like to stick with this and have a six-month review, and she just came to me about it. It's always nice to have some room, uh, you know.
Just in case.
Yeah.
That means we need to put a work session in between Valentine's Day and the middle of March. That isn't the work session that we already scheduled.
Did we schedule work sessions in March?
In February, twenty-second.
Yeah, the twenty-second, so.
But I mean, two weeks into March, what does that give us? Because we don't have a meeting on the seventh.
You all could incorporate it into a regular meeting as well, just throwing that out there.
It's a possibility. Okay. Any other thoughts or questions? I would entertain a motion, please. Bill moves to adopt resolution number seven, series of twenty twenty-two, a resolution appointing Lori Simonton as city administrator for the city of Leadville and approving an employment agreement.
Councilmember Fergency seconds.
I think he won.
Yeah, Christian, Christian beat you to it. Any other discussion? All right, thank you. Rule call, please.
Councilmember Tharp.
Yes.
Councilmember Fergency.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leo.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil.
Yes.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yeah.
Well, I want to say the enthusiasm, yes, but.
I, I, I change my introduction depending on how I feel.
Oh, yeah.
I think I've had a few, you know.
Six yeses and oh, yeah. Okay, next up, resolution number eight, series of twenty twenty-two, a resolution approving amendments to the city's purchasing policy to authorize purchasing thresholds and procure responsibilities of the city administrator. Christiane, this doesn't change our purchasing policy, does it?
Well.
Other than to establish.
Yes, that's right. The the main provisions stay in place, but it does provide the city administrator with some purchasing authority. And then consistent with the duties of the city administrator in the ordinance and employment agreement, the city administrator takes over certain decision-making and, you know, authorization oversight, I should say, responsibilities under the purchasing policy as well. So under the ordinance, one of the city administrator's duties is to make sure that procurements of goods and services of the city are compliant with the city's purchasing policy. And though there are just some relatively minor amendments to the purchasing policy that hopefully you can see in the red line to incorporate that position and make sure that everything is consistent.
I have a question.
Go ahead, gentlemen.
And I am looking at those authorization levels and procurement required procurement procedures in section E. And I'm just I'm just wondering, I know this is down the line, but when we do go to a weak mayor system, Mayor, you're strong. I understand that. But I mean, I'm just talking. When we do go down that, we will have to, I mean, I'm just thinking ahead. We'll have to change this as a I guess, what happens when we do go to a weak mayor system? Would we still have it as the mayor? As the authorization for ten, fifteen thousand dollars?
No, usually in a different.
We'll see what Chris Johnson says. Chris Johnson, do you have an answer for that?
I do. So usually what happens is that the mayor is not, the mayor is usually in a different form of government, in the weak mayor form of government. The mayor is, you know, kind of the head of city council and runs meetings and everything, but is also kind of just another member of city council. And so the mayor line in that table and the purchasing policy would be taken out. And it would be department heads, city administrator, and then city council for the those thresholds.
Yeah, and and I just asked that.
On us going to the ballot and 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 getting voter approval of a city manager for what's going.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And and I guess the reason why is, I mean, five thousand dollars between, you know, a a dollar limit of over ten thousand and between ten thousand and fifteen thousand dollars seem seems pretty small. That threshold in there where it should be to the mayor. And if the city administrator is truly overseeing all departments in the entire the the entire, you know, city, I mean, can we just get rid of that entire line and just give her the authority of the city administrator authority for between five and fifteen thousand dollars as if it was the mayor? Or is there some sort of check and balance I'm missing?
That is city council's prerogative. That's under your discretion. There's.
Yeah, I I like that idea, Max. I think that's, it seems silly to have that extra, you know, five thousand dollar break. I think, you know, we should change it from, you know, five to fifteen for the city administrator above fifteen and city council. What does everybody else think?
I've always grimaced for surprise expenditures over five grand. Sounds like big numbers to me.
What would you like to say?
It's, you know what, it's okay. This is it's a new structure, and I just need to recognize the part of the city administrator's job is overseeing larger purchases. It's not really our job every single.
And city council can always choose to, this is just an option. You can do whatever you want here. But another one option is to keep the mayor in for now as the transition happens. And then down the line, make an amendment to the purchasing policy again. You can just amend it by resolution, so it's not hard. You can amend it again to take the mayor out of that line and just have the city administrator bump her authority up. Or bump her range of authority up, I guess. So that's that's another option. If you want to do it in steps.
In the job description and and certainly, well, the the city administrator takes responsibility for the budget. As such, I don't see any reason for the mayor to have a position here other than being a member of city council.
That's an excellent point. On the other hand, it's never a bad thing they have another set of eyes on something. And all it's asking for is your signature.
I'm okay with that, too. I'm okay with whatever you guys want.
I guess I guess my only issue with it is the fact that it's just a singular pay, this singular ban between ten thousand and fifteen thousand dollars that's inserted for the mayor where we go to over fifteen thousand dollars to city council and under from five to ten, it's the city administrator. I think that five thousand dollar ban is kind of just almost, to me, I mean, frightening, confusing. I mean, I, you still have to go to a simple, through a simplified procurement's procedure and have at least two bids with three bids preferable, so they're not able to go through. I mean, if you really feel that there's a like a certain line items that we're gonna, that we need just the mayor over it. And it just seems that it it it's kind of going against, in my opinion, the whole reason why we have the city administrator position overseeing the budget when we have the mayor in this really thin band between ten and fifteen thousand dollars. Now that said, I'm not going to fall over my sword on this one, but I just I just feel that it doesn't necessarily have to be there. I mean, we're 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 giving the trust to the city administrator. I don't know how that ban between ten and fifteen thousand dollars would be taken advantage of or something that we wouldn't have checks and balances on as we look through our our paying the bills every month. But like I said, I'm okay with that. I was just raising it as something that kind of, to me, looked out of place. But I can go either way. If we have stronger opinions the other way, I'm I'm fine with it.
I'm going to suggest that we make the change, that the city administrator approval is from five thousand to fifteen thousand. And the city council over fifteen thousand. Can everybody, do we have consensus on that? I mean, I know there are different opinions, but what do you think? I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay, Christiane.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other changes that we're thinking about? Looking at the red line version, all it's doing is making all the changes that are that are described, so I don't see any problems there. I would entertain a motion with the changes as suggested.
Loretson moves to adopt resolution number eight, series of twenty twenty-two, a resolution approving amendments to the city's purchasing policy to authorize purchasing thresholds and procurement responsibilities of the city administrator. amended to read that the city administrator's approval for purchases of five thousand to fifteen thousand dollars.
Fregency, seconds.
Any other discussion? My only discussion is nice catch, Max. Rule call, please.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leo.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Fregency.
Yes.
Councilmember Tharp.
Yes. Thank you.
Right, next, we have an ordinance. This is also first reading.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry to interrupt. It just occurred to me that with that change in the purchasing policy, there may be a couple of sections that I need to look at to make sure everything is consistent. Is it okay with everybody if I make those changes as I, as are necessary to make sure that change is incorporated fully into the policy?
Yes, please.
There might be a couple of sections that talk about the mayor's authorization for something or other, and so I would just want to be able to update it as needed.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you, Christiane.
Thank you.
This is ordinance six, series of twenty twenty-two, an ordinance repealing chapter ten point one two of title ten of the Leadville municipal code concerning parking permits. So we 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 voted this to stop the program as of December thirty-first, but this will actually put that in code. Any thoughts on this, Christiane?
This is just literally taking the parking permit program provisions out of the municipal code so that the code reflects city council's decision to terminate the program.
Thank you. Any questions for Christiane or thoughts? In which case I would entertain a motion, please.
We move to adopt ordinance number six, series of twenty twenty-two, an ordinance repealing chapter ten point one two of title ten of the Leadville municipal code concerning parking permits on first reading. I further move to schedule the second reading of this ordinance for city council's regular meeting on March first, twenty twenty-two. Loretson, second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil.
Yes.
Mayor Lobby.
Yeah.
Councilmember Luna Leo.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Fregency.
Yes.
Councilmember Tharp.
Yes.
Just for everybody's edification, we were having a conversation, the chief sergeant, Ortega and I, and it came to our attention, and it's no surprise, there are people who have no idea that the parking permit program has been reviewed. And we had, I mean, you know, an issue on Seventh Street, and we talked about how we're going to deal with it, you know. But no matter what we do, there are always going to be people who say we didn't know. And that unfortunately, this nature of what we do, we just have to deal with it to the best of our ability. I think we did a really good job with people on short terminals in terms of trying to accommodate people. So.
Did we send out notice to, yeah, okay.
Two two notices, UniRev sent out a notice, and then we sent out a letter to.
No, I mean regarding the people who have the parking permits, the signs.
We sent out a newsletter last year, and we probably need to do another one here shortly. So I think that's a good suggestion. And that won't take me long to put it together. Of just reinforcing what's going to happen.
And reassuring them that we're not going to leave them in in March.
Can we make sure that we're reaching out to everybody with the sign with the letter?
Yeah.
We can do that, but what I did last time, I sent to every household in Leadville. I didn't, I didn't, you know, send it just to people's sides. I sent it to every household. And there are about over thirteen hundred of them.
I do think it's good for the whole community, the whole city, to know that that is happening.
It's good in the paper at least once, maybe more.
Yeah, it might be good to get some, like, to do a press release on it or get it in the paper again.
I think it's a good idea. I'll do a newsletter and a press release.
And then can you easily generate an email to the permit holders because they have emails on file?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Because, well, I do think it's good to educate the whole city. I do think we sort of need to target the people to who have signs in front of their houses before somebody shows up and, you know, yanks them out of the ground.
Yeah.
Which we are going to do later. But no, you're right. It gives us time to communicate.
Yeah.
I think that was a wise decision to not rush deploying the signs as soon as the program is over. Okay, public meetings planner, you know, let's let's go over real quick what we've talked about in terms of I show we're having a city council work session on February the twenty-second. Right now, I think that's the follow-up on parking, and we may have, we know, we may know a lot more than we than we know now. A lot of things in the works. Well, I think one of the things in that work session, we should talk about signage. And really, what what is it we're looking for? We need to order those things. You know, and give them a couple of months to, especially if they're specialty signs at all to get them here in time for spring.
Which, who would be installing those and which department?
Street.
Street department. And is it on their radar that that they'll have? That will be part of their workload at some point? Or does it need to?
It just is. I mean, you know.
Okay.
Let's send them an email to.
Flip that in.
I take it, but I just break the news to them. And then in March, we have city council on the first and fifteenth. Yes, Laurie?
I just wanted to mention something in February before you went on.
Yeah, please.
Just a reminder that the there was the the joint B O C C and Lake County School District and City Council meeting. They have shows on February seventeenth for that meeting. And I just got an update. It will be at the C M C in the New Discovery Building, room one twenty-one. So it's it's a, they've got the sound system and the good Zoom situation going at the C M C building. I just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Okay.
Because it'll probably be that week that I send out whatever they give me for that.
So that's the seventeenth?
The seventeenth, February seventeenth from six to eight P M.
And that was what room number?
Room number one twenty-one at C M C in the New Discovery Building.
And you're going to have to choose between Nordic State meeting with the B O C C.
What is that? That's for garden housing, is that right?
Yes.
You have locates that's in the. Okay. So in.
Put in the date of the twenty-fourth that you prefer to pick.
In March, we have city council on the first and the fifteenth. I'm going to be gone on the twenty-second. Would we consider a work session on the eighth, or is that a bit much? Or maybe we do it on the twenty-ninth?
Remind me which work session, which topic?
What were we?
We have talked, there's in in the city administrators being it requires that we have some sort of a strategic.
Yeah.
Planning meeting.
I don't think that has to be a really long meeting, but just to have it, it's more like a conversation around what we want. And I think we could, we could have a maybe a one-hour meeting on the eighth.
Yeah, I mean, technically, it's supposed to be within thirty days, what we just approved.
I'd rather see it done sooner than later.
I agree.
I think Max had his hand up.
Max, yes, sir.
Yeah, I I would prefer the eighth of March, and hopefully we can have a discussion more than one hour in length. But that said, I guess this is a good time to tell everybody that I will be going down the Grand Canyon starting the twenty-seventh of March and. Starting uh the twenty-seventh of March and being gone until the seventeenth. So I will not be here for our March meetings. I I have a smile on my face. I'm I'm happy that I'm going down the Grand Canyon and but apologize. That I won't be here at the city council meetings for that time.
How many days is that, Max?
Uh, well, we're going to be down the the river for twenty-one days. We'll be gone for almost twenty-five.
Winter permitting rocks.
That's a lot of scorpions.
Thank you.
They're all on the ground.
The answer is yes.
That's why you don't sleep on the ground, on the rafters.
Yeah, you do. What are you talking about?
Well, okay, you have one. Okay, good. Well, then we'll agree to have this work session with the city administrator. I'm looking forward to that.
I will also be gone on the thirteenth through the twentieth.
Oh, you will, okay.
Of March?
Of March, yes.
You go to the Grand Canyon?
No. I will not be.
Incidentally, as a side note, on the nineteenth and twentieth, and we haven't seen the final schedule yet. The delegation from Alahous is going to be here.
Of March?
And that's uh, well, that's because it's St. Patty's Day, the seventeenth.
Ah, how come I'm always going on those?
Well, I I had scheduled a a race in Texas for that weekend and I canceled it because.
Yeah.
Uh, I I just can't stand the thought of not being here to to meet them and and enjoy the weekend with them.
Actually, just keep missing all their.
Probably depending on their schedule, will probably think about doing the St. Patty's Day parade on that Saturday when they're here. They're from Ireland.
I know.
They even have Irish accents. Jamison's or Bush Mills? Uh, yes.
I vote Bush Mills.
I vote Jamison's. All right, anything else for the public meetings planner? All right, mayor's report now. The the uh national snowshoe championship was this last Saturday in Leadville. Big deal. So the same goes that you can't win the national championship unless you show up. So I showed up. As it turns out, you can't win the national championship even if you do show up. Uh, but what a perfect day, what a fabulous event. And CMC has has hosted this before. It was marvelous.
Did some of you?
Uh, yeah, the one of the people who laughed me. Cause I was doing the five K and they were doing ten K. They literally laughed me before I could get to the finish line. Three of them did. All right, any other uh council reports?
I do have a report this time. Um. Today at full circle, I was informed that there was four homeless people, uh recently homeless people. Approached the full circle office with asking, and this was this week alone, um and just started. Um, who were asking about any type of. Temporary housing until they can get some type of long-term rental going on. Um, we've looked into it deeply. From what we've found so far, there are no resources anywhere near. Um, Chape County is the closest um place with perhaps maybe resources. Um, we're reaching out at full circle ourselves to see if that's an appropriate place to send them. The problem is. All four of them do wish as much as they possibly can to remain here in Leadville. They have strong ties, they have family. Um, and they would love to continue to hopefully live here long term. So it seems like this is a reoccurring issue, um at least more recently with COVID. As you guys know, we've been working with the um Med Needs Committee. For this entire time of COVID and that's been very busy as well as um connecting multiple members to E-Rap. Um, through full circle, so it does seem like this is a huge necessity in housing so far. Um, and I don't know what we could do about it, but uh gets this good thing to bring it up here. Um, alongside with that, I was looking at our municipal code. I couldn't find anything about minimum wage. And I think we should definitely talk about potentially increasing that to fifteen. Um, at the very least, I was looking into to see if there's any. Um. If there's any what the cost of living is here and it doesn't seem like there is an appropriate cost of living here. Um, and we would have to refer to the cost of living of Eagle County. Um, which is, as we all know, not the same as cost of living here, so it's also something that seems to be.
But we do know what the area median income is here.
Yeah.
It's about fifty-one-five for one person and I think fifty-eight for two people.
Right. Um, but ultimately, these are just things I've noticed. And I think, and I've talked to this uh um multiple community members as well as another city council member. We should definitely look into um incrementing some type of minimum wage based off of what the cost of living is here. Obviously, that would also require some type of assessment to find out what the true cost of living is here in in Lake County. Um, so I think that's something that we should all um at some point look into. I know we're very busy with a lot of other matters, but I think that would. At least partially help with housing, hopefully.
Okay, I would say a couple of things. Uh, there is a homeless coalition which met last Wednesday for the first time. And you I think you were on that Zoom call, weren't you? Okay, uh, and we're gonna start looking at solutions. And one of the things that I've I've actually talked about for a couple of years and. It's it's far from implementing it and there may be some downsides to implementing it. We had talked about when we're able to implement low-income housing, maybe setting aside one floor. Let's say we have three, three, four uh buildings uh for low-income housing. Each one's got about thirty-two units. And maybe have one of those floors for homeless. The reason I say that is, and I I've been to seminars in the state that say. It's good if you want to do this. It's complicated because you can't just give them housing. That that won't work. It will fail because it's all al- almost always mental illness issues with homelessness. Uh, maybe not the kind of homelessness you're describing though. That sounds different, but nonetheless, in homeless in in general. You have to supply wraparound services to the homeless in in that setting or or it it you will not be able to control it. And so there's a lot to consider. I'm looking forward to these future meetings. This homeless coalition to try and understand what's going on. And uh and just. You know, because to me, I think of homeless as as individuals who come here and they don't have a place to live. But they were talking to Gloria and she's saying, oh, no, these are families that are homeless. You know, this is much more complicated, you know, uh because of that and and the kind of services they're trying to provide at in the county rapper. So there's a lot to consider here in terms of trying to make this work.
Yeah, and we we we've looked into some counties as well. Um, what we've seen um with talking to FERC. Um, there might be some in the new hotel that they've just bought for um for the. Uh, low affordable rent that they are doing right now. Um, but we're not sure just yet to see if that's a viable option for them, but like I said, they do really strongly want to remain. In Lake County and it seems like this is something that we should definitely.
Would an element of meeting the needs of unhoused residents fall within the purview of the housing director?
Yes.
Okay.
Almost certainly.
Good.
Uh, and we hope that that person will come in with some experience.
And I'm glad to hear there's a, is it a newly formed coalition that's?
Yes, that was the first meeting this Wednesday.
Was any work done on that with the housing coalition that Christie Delires ahead of that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Christie was part of that. She organized it, I believe.
Yeah, so Christie, um, from from what I my understanding, that meeting was made because. It seemed like it was it would fall under the housing.
Yeah.
Coalition that they already had.
Yeah.
But not quite, so they decided to make a new group for that specifically as.
I in a in a near meeting, I would love to hear um a report from Christie or someone else who's who, you know, has. That perspective of what are what what is our unhoused needs in this community? Um, because I feel like the conversations I've been part of have really focused on attainable and affordable. Um, and I would I would. I would like to hear about that layer of housing.
Well, I think that was part of the purpose of the meeting. We have to find out what is it we're talking about because again, I had a certain. Uh, image of what we're talking about and I was wrong, you know? I I was I was not fully informed about what this issue may be uh in terms of families and.
Or homeless, even to what extent it is a problem in our county right now. Um.
And I think some of the, you know. Depending on the locations where you're talking about, um, you know, like my my sister does a lot of work with. Homeless law in Seattle and I I think just some of the larger places, you get more of. An issue with with people who have are chronically unhoused. So there's a lot of, you're right, you know, some. Mental issues with that versus people who are temporarily unhoused or maybe recurrently so because of. Uh, more financial reasons.
Yeah, you're right, of course.
And and I might be jumping the gun a bit on this ahead, but it's also what I've heard is a huge issue in a lot of other counties, at least from the perspective of homeless. Is the lack of leniency from those facilities, especially when it comes around um abuse of substance. The lack of leniency to understand that, you know, they're humans and they need to detox and they're not gonna be clean immediately. There's a time period in which they will relapse and that's normal when you're quitting substances of any kind, so.
I think in Denver, they struggle with that because those are large group settings.
Yeah.
And and they have to be pretty strict.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so.
But obviously, you know. Um, I I think it's important to, at the very least, think about um as well as the minimum wage issue. Um, I think currently what the state said is not what would be able to be living here um in Lake County at least. Based off what I've seen in full circle, so I really think that we should look into also implementing a city. Uh, minimum wage that's correspondent to our actual cost of living here.
Any other thoughts on that? Yeah, you got to.
Thanks for bringing it up.
It's so great.
Thing here.
It is, but cool. Any other city council reports? Max, you got anything?
Not right now, mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Well, thank you. Great city council session. It is seven fifty-five. The city council is adjourned.
Well, are these people there?
Maybe there.
I did put that easy button down there on purpose. I don't know how I got.
Clearly, I was just.
We're sure in your.
Cisco.
I was gonna ask.
I hit it once.
Sarah, cause she was doing so much and I thought she really needed that, but now, yeah, it's sort of.
It's a.
Well, see, it was here, but then I moved down to the little room.
Oh, listen.
I think that.
Gotta get a problem.
I don't want that, you know, I don't want easy button inflation. I know, I don't want to let her.
Right. You can even know when the light off.
Yeah.